Good evening and welcome to the Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting. My name is Greg Ferris and I want to welcome you all tonight and thank you for taking time to be here. As you can see, we have a few special guests we're going to recognize tonight. They wrap all around this room and way down the hallway, so it's an exciting time tonight to be at Forney ISD. These monthly meetings are open to the public, although these meetings are public comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. I do announce that we do have a warrant present and this meeting has been published according to law. We're going to start off this evening moving on to our invocation. Tonight, we'll be glad to have with us Alan Guido is the high school student pastor at Mustang Creek Community Church. Alan, if you could make your way up. Before coming to Mustang Creek Community Church, Alan serves as youth pastor for eight years. Alan and his wife and their young son recently moved to Forney. He's worked with schools for many years. He serves as a paraprofessional in DISD and is student advisor for Texas Can Academy. Alan is currently pursuing his bachelor's degree in Biblical Studies from Grand Canyon University. Mustang Creek Church has adopted two of our campuses, Crosby Elementary and North Forney High School. They've been very involved on campus in different activities. The church has partnered with these two campuses hosting events, doing character coaching, and providing Christmas gifts for families in need. We're thankful for the partnership with Forney ISD and we look forward to continue that in the future. I want to thank you for being here and welcome you and your family for being with us. So if you would all rise for the invocation.
Dear God, we come to you today asking your blessing over our school board and leadership. Thank you that they have answered the call to lead our teachers and schools so that our children might learn in a safe and nurturing environment conducive to academic and personal success. Bless our school board with wisdom, integrity, patience, and the physical and mental energy equal to their task. Bless them with strong support from parents, teachers, and the community. Enable and empower our board and their decisions to act as encouragers for our teachers, parents, and students. May they be approachable, friendly, and professional as they support our schools. We pray for our school administrators' role in keeping our school campuses safe from violence, threats, and bullying. May your protecting angels surround them in our schools. When outside resources are needed, we ask that they may be readily available to our schools and students. Reward our board by allowing them to see the fruits of their labor displayed in the success of their teachers and students. Give our school administrators joy in seeing their school become a central point of the greater community, a place that has a family feel. Accept our prayer today as an expression of our gratefulness to you and to them for their dedication in making our schools a central and vital part of our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Now, we'll begin our student recognition with our Students of the Month. I'd like to ask Dr. Jonathan Campbell, Principal Forney High School, and Ms. Rachel Bonner, Principal Criswell Elementary, to please come to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, school board members. Dr. Terry, I appreciate everybody being here tonight. I'd like to present our Student of the Month, Brittany Harris. She is a wonderful young lady, a senior. She has plans to go on to Sam Houston State University. I'm not going to hold it against her, Max and Jax. But she's going to double major in bassoon performance and music education. And then after graduation, she plans on pursuing a career with the Air Force Band. And then, of course, we're going to try and woo her to come back and be at a director of bands here in Forney in the near future. Of course, that's the hope. That is definitely what we want. I've also got three teachers that have given some very nice comments about Brittany, so I'd like to share that with you. Brittany is a very hard worker and never gives up. Between band and school and part-time jobs, yes, multiple jobs, she is one of the hardest workers that I've ever seen as a student. And that's from Ms. Reese. She's a chemistry teacher at Forney High. Next is Mr. Capshaw. He's our choir teacher. Brittany is a wonderful student who is constantly eager and excited about learning. She has been described as kind, driven, and very hard worker by her peers. It's been a pleasure to have her be a part of the Forney Choir, and this year, she strives to further her musical abilities and knowledge. We love her and the positive attitude she brings and her joyful energy. And then, of course, last but not least, Mr. Newman, our head band director. Brittany is a standout musician, not only in our band program, but statewide as she has competed and earned first-chair bassoon in the entire state of Texas. Her musical prowess and work ethic are only second to her kindness and patience with others. She has shown time after time her willingness to mentor and tutor young members of the Forney Band, providing an incredible example of servant leadership in each situation. I've had the great privilege of watching Brittany grow into a wonderful young woman whose character and personality only exceeds her tremendous accomplishments. I could not think of a more deserving candidate of Student of the Month than Brittany Harris.
Good evening, board and Dr. Terry. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to highlight two of our finest Criswell students. I also appreciate you allowing me to showcase two students because I brought one from the monolingual side and one from our dual-language program. So Leonardo Beltran is a fourth grader at Criswell. He is the son of Alfredo and Iris Beltran. He has a sister that also attends Criswell. Leonardo has attended Criswell since kindergarten. Math is his favorite subject. He says his favorite thing about Criswell is how his teachers teach him. He has learned a lot. He enjoys playing with his friends and family when he is not in school. When he grows up, he would like to be an entrepreneur or a psychologist. His teachers report that Leonardo is very intelligent, thoughtful, and an excellent role model for other students. So Leonardo is representing our monolingual side tonight. And then, our other Student of the Month from Criswell is Miranda Salas. She is a fourth-grade dual-language student at Criswell. She is the daughter of Bertha De La Cruz. Miranda has two older siblings. Miranda says that math, science, and social studies are her favorite subjects at school. Her favorite thing about Criswell this year has been being a part of the student council. She also says that she loves her teachers. Outside of school, Miranda likes to do puzzles, read, play board games, and play outside. When she grows up, she would like to be a vet or a chef. Her teachers report Miranda is respectful and extremely hard worker and is always looking for ways to better herself. We are thankful for both of these two great kids at Criswell who embody our motto, KWC, kindness to others, work together, encouraged to try.
If you'd rise for our pledges.
Now for the pledge. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Honra la bandera de Texas. Te juro lea tat Texas.
Now, we're going to move on with more student recognition. There's lots more to come. At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Robin Pierce to introduce our Kaufman County FFA Grand Champions and North Forney High School HOSA. So, Robin, if you would, and board members, if you would, come down here and join us at the front.
Thank you. This past month, Forney ISD made quite a splash at the Kaufman County Livestock Show. Several students from Forney High and North Forney were awarded and recognized at the event. We had four students that were first in division in Agmech and 15 students placing in livestock. We congratulate all Forney High and North Forney FFA students and teachers for their hard work this year, but tonight, we get the special honor of recognizing our students who completed and were awarded the highest honor of Grand Champion. So from Forney High School, we have freshman Lexi Latimer. From North Forney High School, we are recognizing Senior Taryn Dodson. And sophomore Anaya Wilson. Please join me in congratulating these students. North Forney High School's HOSA's team competed against seven other teams and placed second to move on to the state HOSA Championship in Galveston. They will compete against 20 other teams across Texas and are hungry to make a name for themselves by making nationals later in the summer. Join us in celebrating their hard work that got them this far, including the work put forth by their teacher, Ms. Sherry Buck. We can't wait to see what they do at the state level. Holly Elliott. And Nicholas Maxon. Ms. Buck, if you are down, if you could come down and join in the picture. Please join us in congratulating these students.
Okay, next, moving on to item three, is a powerlifting. I'd like to call Mr. Neil Weaver to the microphone, please, athletic director for Forney ISD. Mr. Weaver, you'll be there for the next two or three, so just carry on.
Yes, sir. We'll keep it going. Thank you, Mr. Ferris, members of the board. Dr. Terry and guests, I've got to tell you, it's always a blessing and, to be honest, it's fun for me to have the opportunity to recognize some great young men and women from our athletic program across the district. In this case, we're going to start with our state qualifiers for the State of Texas Powerlifting Meet. These qualifiers are from Forney High, and first, I'd ask Coach Brandon Stewart to come up and join us for this. I will tell you, too, we have an excellent powerlifting program in this district. We've had multiple state champions, and we have state qualifiers almost every year. We also host the largest powerlifting meet in the state of Texas at Forney High School each year. We have a young lady qualifier this year at the state in Jayden Thrasher. And on the boys' side, we have sophomore Easton McMillan and senior Reese Mercer. We have all four basketball programs represented this evening. These are academic all-state award winners. To be an academic all-state, a student-athlete has to be a valuable contributing member of the varsity team, a senior, and has to carry an A GPA across the board. All of these members qualify for that. On the girls' side at Forney High, Coach Shelby Holland, I don't believe, could be here this evening. We had Taylor Sartan and Alexis Newman, and I believe both of those young ladies were working, I think, is the last note I got. They were both at work. On the girls' side at North Forney High School, I do know Coach Donald Fleming is here. Coach Fleming, if you'd come up. Moving to the boys' side, Forney High School, Coach Bart Holloway. Bart, come on up. He's joined by seniors and academic all-state members Nick Benet, Austin George, Logan And for North Forney High School on the boys' side, Coach Mark Patton. Coach Patton, come on up. We have Devon Franklin and David Shedinde. swim and dive program. Coach Jason Thompson is here. Coach Thompson, if you'd come on up. We recognized state qualifiers for swim and dive, I believe, last month. This time, it's academic all-state, beginning with, on the elite team, academic all-state, Three first-team members, Michael Gilbert, Jocelyn Aragonés, and Cheyenne Barnes. And second-team academic all-state, Bryce Benson.
of Virtual Learning and Media Services. Please to the microphone. She has several people to introduce.
All right, good evening, everybody. I am thrilled to be standing up here today to share with you about our program that we have been doing for the last couple of months. Fired up for reading. So important for us to continue to read as we continue to grow. This has truly been a partnership to make this happen, and it has included the Forney Fire Department, the City of Forney, Walmart, and our Forney Education Foundation. Through this community, we were able to run a reading program for all students pre-K through our 12th grade. Through this partnership, I would like to recognize two key people that have been a part of this, and that is John Holcomb, our fire marshal, and Derek Briggs, our fire chief. Without these two, we would not have been able to do this. They actually approached us, and from there, we have grown this partnership that we will continue on from years to come. About our competition, the purpose of this competition was not to see who could read the most, but it was really to get our students to want to read, to find the love of reading, and then enjoy opening up a book. So every student that read 360 minutes, their name was placed in a drawing. For every 100 minutes they read after that, their name was added to the drawing again. It is very possible for a winner today to have read 370 minutes, or we have somebody in this group that read 12,000 minutes. So we want to recognize any time that we pick up a book and read, because if we're reading, we're doing it right. Through this, the prizes included, our pre-K and Kinder students actually enjoyed a book read by a fireman. So a fireman went to the campus and read a book. There are first and fourth graders. A winner was chosen, first, second, third, and fourth, and at that time, you received lunch with the fireman. From those four, a grand prize winner was chosen, and they are winning a bicycle from Walmart and a firefighter to ride in a fire truck to go to school. We've already done three of those, and that has been a lot of fun. Yeah, there it is. With the donation of a $50 gift card through our Forney Education Foundation, we were able to do this program with our fifth through 12th. So they have provided us two $50 gift cards, so we do have a winner for two students at every secondary campus. This year, I'm excited to announce that we, 1.6 million minutes is what we did as a school district in nine weeks. So next year, our goal, 2 million, and we can do it. So that is what we are going to do. All right, before I announce our winners, I'd like to announce one of our key winners tonight, and that is going to be Dr. Terry, who has been given a backpack. We have been told Dr. Terry read his 360 minutes, so to you, Dr. Terry, it is a backpack. Each of your students have won this backpack as well. Congratulations, Dr. Terry. All right, are we ready? Here are our winners. Elementary, John Noah. Grand prize winner for Blackburn, Michaela Hernandez. Grade level winner, Rachel Casbier. Clay Bond. Grade level winner, Irene Anwer. Grade level, Maria Wall. Grand prize winner, Luke Bethel. Crosby, grade level winner, Mackenzie Clayton. Criswell, grand prize winner, Ava Hepler. Griffin Elementary, classroom, grade level winner, Daniel Mendoza. Henderson Elementary, Madeline Wood, class winner. Grade level winner, Einstein Che. Sorry, oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. I was watching this way. I'll do graduation for you. Grand prize winner, Henderson, Emily Wetzall. Johnson, grade level winner, Evan Montoya. As we are finding her certificate, Ms. Curry, will you come on up, please, and represent Thank you. Secondary campuses, Ray Nahomi Francesco. Smith Mariel Billetti and Piper Phillips. Rhodes Salgahe Alphazaw and Bren Frazier. All right, Brown Middle School, Kayden Wells. Jackson Middle School, Lillian Arnold. Warren J.C. Chandler. Warren Devon Murphy. And a big, big shout-out to our high school student that came today, North Forney, Jesse Ho. Dr. Terry, we are actually, our secondary campuses, we are going to give away, donated by the fire department, two Amazon Fires. So if you will draw me two names, these two people will win a fire device today. Kayden Wells, congratulations. Ethan Hernandez, congratulations. All right, thank you.
And as our students find their way back to their parents, we'd like to ask the fire chief and the fire marshal to stay with us, please. We are so grateful for their support of this program and for growing it to be so huge. Dr. Terry and I actually got to do a Facebook Live with one of our, with one of the students who got to ride the fire truck in, and I think we were all just as excited as that student was. So we also got to go and watch them read to one of our classrooms. They have donated so much of their time, and I also learned today that they have now volunteered to help at Special Olympics as well. We are so grateful for their support of our students in our district. So we would like to present you with one of our Forney Family Awards for helping us so much and partnering and just supporting our programs.
Our crowd got a little smaller and a little quieter. So moving on then to item B would be our staff recognition. At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Judy Weber, Chief Learning Officer, to introduce some very special guests here tonight.
Mr. Ferris and school board members, it's an honor to recognize our Teachers of the Year. We have a really great group this year. Our teachers have carried the mantle. They work very, very hard for our students, very, very hard for our families, and the district wouldn't be the great district it was if it wasn't for our teachers. And this group represents all of our staff, and we're just really honored to honor and recognize our Teacher of the Year. We did have a few who weren't able to make it. I'm going to go ahead and call their names out, but then, as I call your names, please come up front. We've got a little gift for you, and then we'll get a photo. But before we start, we've got a video to share with the group. Hopefully you saw a little bit about what they do each and every day for our students. So as I call your names, please come up, and we've got your trophy and a book for you, and then we'll get a great photo of our teachers. So starting off in alpha order by campus, from Blackburn Elementary, Devon Evans-Brown. I don't believe she was able to make it, but let's go ahead and recognize her. From Claybon Elementary, Brandy Christian. From Criswell Elementary, Norma Saldana. From Crosby Elementary, Laura Brandis. From Griffin Elementary, Kristen Joesting. From Henderson Elementary, Ashley Mays. From Johnson Elementary, Mackenzie Bachler. From Lewis Elementary, Kristen Garza. From Ray Intermediate, Christina May. From Rhodes Intermediate, Jenny Busby. From Smith Intermediate, Trent Starnes. And now for secondary, from Brown Middle School, Amy Hansen. From Jackson Middle School, Jill Rouse. From Warren Middle School, Caitlin Trotter. From Forney High School, Chelsea Baransky. And from North Forney High School, Tiffany Ross. And our Forney Learning Academy was Nicole Smith Hooks. Great group of people. So moving on, after our teachers are recognized, then we have, they have another step to go through, another process with some interviews, and then our District Teachers of the Year are selected. And representing elementary for the district is Christina May. And for our secondary district teacher of the year, Jill Rouse. So they move on now to compete for our region teacher of the year.
I want to say congratulations to them also, and after this, we're going to have a brief recess. So if you would like to step out this time while we take pictures, it's kind of like a wedding, you know? This is the bride and groom's time. So we'll be taking some more pictures at this time, but thank you for being here tonight. Well, thank you all for being here tonight, and we'll continue on. That was a great time of celebration. We've been celebrating all weekend with the foundation, and now tonight with all this. If you're cold or feel distant in the back of the room, feel free to move forward. We have empty seats available now, okay? Moving on with reports, 6A, our monthly financial report, Mr. John Chase, Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. The finance report for the month ending February was included in your board packet for review. Just the highlights of the report, just starting with the general fund revenues. A year-to-date collections is $96.5 million, and that's 75% of the amount that was estimated. And prior year, at the same point in time, we were at 72%. So we're tracking along pretty well with our revenues in the general fund. Moving on to expenditures, a year-to-date expenses was $90 million, which is 64% of the amount appropriated. And prior year, at the same point in time, we were at 61%. And we're running a little ahead of our expenditures this year because of the capital improvement projects that we're funding out of the general fund. And so we're about 3% ahead of where we were at the same point in time last year, but no big surprises. That was a planned expenditure. Moving on to food service, a year-to-date revenue was $5 million, which is 93% of the amount originally estimated. As you know, we started the free lunches for all kids this year, and so our revenues have really picked up this year as compared to where we thought we would normally be this time of year. We do have a board amendment in your packet tonight for you to approve, amending this budget to add an extra million dollars to the revenue estimate and expenditures as well. And you'll see that whenever you get to the budget amendment in the consent. So, but moving along really well in the food service fund. This will allow us to purchase some additional equipment that is in need of repair or replacement at some of our older campuses. So excited about that. Our federal revenue reimbursement this month was $640,000. That's about the same amount we got last month. That's tracking along pretty well. Free lunches served during the month is 112,000 lunches, which is about a little less than 50% of our total student population if you average that out. As far as all-a-cart sales, that was 111,000 for the month, and prior year, revenue recognized at this same point in time was 36%. So doing really well in the food service program at this point. Moving on to expenditures, a year-to-date is 3.6 million, or 67% of the amount appropriated. In prior year, at this same point in time, we were at 51%. So again, no big surprises here. We're having more expenditures because we're serving more meals, and so tracking along where we figured we would be. Moving on to debt service then, we, year-to-date revenue collected here was 32.2 million, or it's 97% of the amount estimated. In prior year, at this same point in time, we were at 99%. For all intents and purposes, in the debt service fund, I mean, we pretty much collected everything we're going to collect this year. And moving, when we show it here in expenses, we're 100% expended. We made our last big bond payment in the month of February. It was $10.5 million principal interest payment, and so year-to-date expenses there now is 31.4 million. Again, so 100% expended. So not a lot of activity to report in the debt service fund from this point on. So I'm not sure that we really even need a debt service report from, you know, from now until the end of the fiscal year. And then finally, on the cash investments on hand at the end of February, when you add the general fund, the food service, debt service, and capital projects, is 312 million. The biggest majority of that, 212 million, is capital projects, and the rest of it, you can see the distribution there. But that's the financial report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Moving on then to summary of finance update.
Yes, sir. This is the, about three times a year, we talk about our summaries of finances. And again, the TEA issued the latest summaries of finance on March the 11th for our district. It's out there on the website where you can access the report and review it anytime you'd like. Just by way of introduction, the summary of finances, it's the report that the state issues that details how they fund school districts and what money that they're flowing to us, and what the reasons that they're flowing to us, and the formula that they established to fund public schools. There's two columns on the report. Just in past board meetings, we've talked about this, so I won't spend a lot of time, but there's a legislative payment estimate column, and then there's the district planning estimate column. The LPE side of the report is how they actually flow the cash to us, and the district planning estimate side of the report is what we, how we, you know, when it's all said and done at the end of the year, it'll be updated with our attendance data that we turn in in June, and it'll be exactly what we did earn. And so there's a, whether, you know, you decide whether you've been over and underpaid at that, you know, at that point. But, you know, every year, there's always a mismatch there. You can't get the estimates correct at the very beginning of the year to be completely free of error. So there's always a settle-up process at the end, and so that's kind of what we are here, just to kind of review where we're at for this time of year. They have updated this report on March 11th with actual property values and, you know, actual, you know, what our estimate of our final tax collections would be. We sent that to them, and they've updated that, both the columns on the report, and then also the economically disadvantaged student numbers that we turned in in October. Those numbers have been updated on both sides of the report. So just moving into the actual report itself, normally this time of year, the average daily attendance has been updated on the district planning estimate side of the equation, so it really gives you a pretty good idea of what you're going to actually earn for the, for the end of the year. As you can see, they haven't updated this report as of this date, and the reason for that is, is they're going to do another hold harmless calculation and actually fund us at a higher rate of average daily attendance than what we actually turned in for the first four, six weeks of the year. Across the state, we've been lagging behind what our normal average daily attendance is in the last is. And in the last, I think, the last year that we had quote-unquote "normal attendance", I guess you want, it's been a couple of years back, but we had 95.7% was our attendance rate. And that's through the first half of this year. I think we were at 93.6%. So, you know, we're lagging about 2% behind where we normally are. And I mean, that's big dollars. I mean, that's about $2 million bucks. And so, you know, when you look at where our average daily attendance was at the end of December, it was actually about $13,100. And so they were funding us on $13,258. But when they do that calculation, we'll actually probably end up with about $13,004 or $13,005. And so it'll make a $2 million swing between what our actual average daily attendance was and what they're going to fund us on. But as far as cash flow goes, it's really only going to be about $1 million different because they're already funding us at $13,258. So I know it's a lot of information, but just real quick, I'll finish the rest of this. Now, they have updated the property values, as I mentioned, that's $6.5 billion. When they started the year out, as you can see over there in the description in line seven, it says that, you know, they initially started out with an estimate of basically 2% above where your certified values were the prior year. Well, you know, our values grew 17%. And so we had, you know, quite a large variance there. And the more property value you have, the less state aid you get. And so whenever they update that state aid number to our actual value, it drives down the amount of state aid they actually will send you. So just FYI on that. And then, as far as what we actually earned, when you add up the available school fund and the foundation school program this year, it's 62.2 million. And then we had another $300,000, almost $400,000 in additional state aid for homestead exemption. And that's back whenever the homestead went from $15,000 to $25,000. We're still getting a little bit of relief on the debt service side for that. So when you all, put it all together, what they're estimating right now with the numbers that are in the formula right now, they've said that, you know, it's basically a break even. But, you know, they're saying that we're going to be overpaid by, you know, $178, which, you know, as I said, when they update the actual attendance with that whole harmless calculation they're going to do, I feel like we're probably going to be underpaid about $1 million. And so that's the report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for it at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Very much. Moving on into item C, Master Planning Update. Ms. Kim Morzak, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you. I'm actually going to do this whole thing all by myself tonight. So we'll see how this goes. Jeff's here if I mess up, but I think I can handle it. We're going to start a little differently than normal and actually talk about the building across the street. As you know, in 2019, the Facilities Committee asked that we find a new purpose for Johnson when we built the new Johnson, that we find a purpose for the old Johnson. So Dr. Weber has been working with the various departments to kind of look at who could potentially move over there. We are pretty crammed here. Right now, we're trying to do interviews, and there's nowhere to do them. So if you want to have a meeting, you get to have it, we were told to have it in our office. And if there's too many people for our office, then find somebody with a bigger office because we're out of space. So Judy's worked really hard to kind of just reimagine what that space is going to look like. And I'm not going to go through all the pieces, but basically, some of our departments are going to move over. Our police department's going to get a, they're in a little bitty office right now. They're growing, and so they need a little more space to stretch out. So they're going to be in the back area. Next to them, Fine Arts and Athletics. And then some additional storage space for those guys in a little conference room. And then in the front, it's really going to be a place for parents. So we're going to have a welcome center over there for people who are enrolling. And they'll be able to come and actually do all the testing they need to do right there in one place instead of having to go place to place. So PEMS will be in the new building. ESL dual-language and SPED is going to take up a large portion. That will allow Human Resources to kind of spread out a little bit and give them a little bit more place as we're trying to hire staff. So that's kind of the overall plan for Johnson. Does anyone have any questions on that before we go to the next part? Awesome. We can't keep calling it the old Johnson. And so because it is a program change and the namesake is going with the building, there does not have to be a board vote. But we have kind of gotten your opinion and talked amongst ourselves. And that is now going to be called the Forney ISD Administration Annex. So just an extension of this building. And Susan put together a little graphic there for you guys. So that's Johnson. I'm also going to kind of update you on just our current construction projects. And I'm actually excited. The pool does not look like this anymore. I showed a video this morning to Dr. Terry. I think he got a little excited. We had to put some wood protection around that Martha Pool as we put the structure up. That is gone. All the lanes are painted. It's about ready to put water in it. The glass is completely in on the outside. There were a couple little things they needed to do on the outside, but all the glass panes are in. It's painted. They're doing kind of a final push and a final clean to get us in there next week. So the pool's looking really, really good. As you know, we got into North Forney's athletic facility last week. They're moving in right now. It's beautiful. So it is substantially complete. We have a few punch items. There's some numbering on some lockers and a few things that are happening. But that building is pretty much done. It's beautiful. Johnson and Willett are both basically in the exact same spot. And if you saw Dr. Terry's Facebook Live, we were there last Friday, out on the patio at Willett. Tiles on the walls. They're painting right now. The lighting is complete. It's really coming together. The pop-ups are done on the roofs. Curtain wall's in progress right now. They're installing kitchen this week. So those are coming along really, really well. I think they pulled up the temporary sidewalk out in front of Willett last week, and they're putting in final sidewalks. So just a few pictures. They painted the double Ts in Willett's gym last week, and they're painting them, I think, in Johnson's gym this week. So that's a picture of Johnson showing you that tile backsplash there in that middle picture in the restroom. And then here's Willett's tile with the three different blues down the bottom. That's in their restroom. So that curtain wall is coming in a lot faster. It's going really, really well. So those are on track and look awesome. There's Willett's double Ts I was talking about. They're painting in that top picture. It's beautiful. The blue on the wall looks really good. So coming along really, really well on those. And then the last one is actually starting to look like a school. So this is the OC. The detention pond is about done, being dug out. They're doing storm and sewer lines right now. Gray beams have been poured, and they're starting CMU wall installation right now in the arena and the elevator shaft. So kind of starting in the middle. So it's starting to look like a school. So everything's progressing just as it should. So any questions for me or Jeff?
Any questions?
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Moving on to item seven, Public Forum. No one signed up to address the board, so we'll move on then to item eight, Consent Agenda. Eight A is approved minutes from the February 28th meeting. Eight B is approved budget amendment. Eight C, approved utility easement. D, approved furniture purchase. E, the statement of impact forms from charter schools, as you see listed there. The board may take action on each of these separately or collectively. Do I have a motion from a board member?
Mr. Ferris, I recommend that we make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda as presented and recommended by the administration.
Is that collectively or separately?
Collectively.
Thank you. Ms. Green, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll move on then to item nine, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Acceptance of the Donation of Real Estate Consisting of Approximately 13.5 Acres Located in Los Lomas. A development in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Terrell and Kaufman County, Texas. Ms. Kim Morzak.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I'm excited to announce to you guys that, you know, as we're growing, we're always looking for land donation sites to build schools because we're going to need them. And we've had a great partnership with Anthony Properties. And they are going to donate an elementary site in the Los Lomas community that is coming here very shortly. So we actually have Jay Anthony, who's the founder of Anthony Properties, here tonight to take a picture with you guys if you accept the donation. So we ask that you approve the ability for the superintendent to negotiate the contract of that donation.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Do I have any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, any comments?
Just one. It was great to meet Mr. Anthony tonight. We've been working directly with his son Ross, and it's already developing into a great partnership. And it's going to be, it looks to be a very beautiful development off on Helms Trail. So very excited to welcome you to the Forney family. And we would definitely recommend acceptance of, or I'm sorry, approval of the ability to finalize and negotiate this contract and pick up an elementary site for the school district in the future.
Okay, you've heard the administration's recommendation. Do I have a motion from the board?
Ferris, I've already voted out the resolution concerning the appropriate compromise. The superintendent will negotiate the next week's donation with AP Dallas and the partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Mr. Anthony, we'd like to ask you to come down front. We'd like to shake your hand and join us in a photo. Moving on to item 10 then, Consideration and Possible Approval of Construction Bids. Ms. Kim Morzak is back to the microphone. And it looks like Mr. Fisher's going to join her this time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm actually going to ask Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Constructions to present the bids tonight for you. As a reminder, there are five, five, five different projects that he'll talk through and then have any questions from the board once he's done presenting the five. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Mr. President, Dr. Terry, members of the board, it's good to be with you again. This is kind of an exciting night. You saw the pictures of the OC being built, but this is kind of the culmination of the rest of the project. So that's going to be good. But I'm going to save the best for last on that one. So the first item that we have for your consideration is the exterior refresh of Citibank Stadium. What we're looking at doing there is, you know, painting the press box exterior, replacing the school logos, since the North Forney logo is the old one, getting that off there, getting the Forney High logo off, and just putting the district logo up there, redoing the signage on the front to give it some backlit signage, give it a little more pop. And then adding a, what they call a stadium wrap on the back of it that'll have some graphics on it. It's kind of a fabric wrap that goes on the back of the bleachers. It really gives some good curb appeal to the stadium and make it look a little nicer. So the total on that project is $340,500. The next one is the newly-named Forney ISD Administration Annex, the work over at the old Johnson. Some of the work that Ms. Morzak described earlier, going in and replacing some flooring, doing some painting, taking out some of the old lockers, doing the updates that need to be done for the administrative staff to move into there. The total on that one is $689,500. Item number three is approval of some modular buildings to be placed at Chriswell and Griffin for temporary purposes until we can get elementary schools number 10 and 11 opened up to take some of the load off of those. The total on that one's $143,012. Fourth item is elementary school number 10, Civil Package. As you'll recall, back in December, you approved the building package for that project, which allowed us to get out ahead and order the steel and concrete and other materials, long lead-time items, and get that project going while the civil design was being done. So we have now bid out the civil work and are bringing those contracts to you for approval. The total on that project overall is $44,785,000. And then item number five, the exciting part, is the Package Two contracts for the OC, which is, as you'll recall, again, back in November, December, the board and the administration made a very good decision to go ahead and bid some of those early packages to allow us to get the site work going, get the steel ordered, get the concrete going, the masonry, the roofing. A lot of those items have done nothing but increase in price over the last four or five months. So it was an excellent decision to move forward with that part of it. We allowed then Huckabee to take time to finish the design, bid out the rest of that project. And the reason I said it's a great night is because, once we got all the bids in, we were able to bring the project in at the $140 million budget that was established for it. In the current times that we're dealing with right now with price increases and inflation, we're just ecstatic about that number. So I hope you guys are too. And that's the five projects. Again, the total on the OC, the total budget is the $140 million even. And then I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about any of those five projects.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Appreciate all of you and Vaughn's hard work on that, bringing that to us tonight. Any other questions from the board? Dr. Terry, any comments?
You know, just to reiterate what Mr. Fisher said, you know, we're seeing 20% over the year. And I think Mr. Andrews would verify that. And so for to come in, you know, on budget or under budget on all of these projects is pretty exciting. And again, just to, you know, give kudos to our architect and construction team, Gallagher Construction, on the way that we're bidding these has really been a benefit for our school district. So we recommend, let's finish these projects up. And so we recommend approving the bids tonight as presented.
Boards, you've heard the presentations and Dr. Terry and staff's recommendations. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion to approve the construction bid as presented.
I have a motion for Mr. Andrews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bateman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me back up here. And my excitement of all the recognition tonight overlooked number 6D. So I'll back up there and announce that the school board complies of continuing education hours. It's my honor to share tonight that 100% has had the opportunity to get all of their CE hours as a board. So I want to thank you all for taking time to do that, attending meetings, workshops, online training. So I appreciate you taking care of that as always. And it's an honor to serve with you. So thank you very much, board. Moving on then to item 11, Closed Session. 11A is Deliberation Regarding Employment of Professional Contract Personnel Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551074, Personnel Matters. 11B is Deliberation Regarding Reemployment of Professional Contract Personnel Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551074, Personnel Matters. 11C is Deliberation Regarding Potential Purchase and Acquisition of Real Estate, Kaufman County, Texas, Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551072. 11D, Consultation with Attorney Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551071. 11E, Deliberation Regarding Potential Purchase and Acquisition of Real Estate in Kaufman County, Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551072. 11F, Texas Government Code 5510821, Discussion of a Matter Regarding a Student or That of a Personally Identifiable Information of a Student, Including Pending Litigation, Student Versus Forney ISD, Texas Education Docket Number 117 SC-0122, State Office of Administration Hearing Docket Number 7012213. And then 11G, Texas Government Code 551071, Consultation of Attorney Regarding Pending Litigation, Student Vertices Forney, Texas, ISD, Texas Education Agency Docket Number 117 SC-0122, State Office of Administration Hearing Docket Number 701221213. Will now be dismissed at 8:17 and closed session. It's now 9:21 PM. We'll call this back into open session with item number 12. Number 12, Consideration Number twelve, consideration and possible approval regarding employment of professional contract personnel. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the ratification of employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item thirteen, consideration and possible approval of re-employment of professional contract personnel. May I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to the board approve the ratification of employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. I may have a second.
Second.
Ms. Bateman, I appreciate it. Moving on then, do we have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Then moving on, number fourteen, consideration and approval of a resolution regarding the purchase of real property consisting of approximately ninety-eight point five seven two acres in the Fred McMahon survey, abstract number three thirteen, on North FM one forty-eight, described as Kaufman County property ID number nine seven three one. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion to the board approve the following resolution authorizing the purchase of real property as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. And item fifteen, consideration and possible action regarding the pending litigation, student versus Fornie I S D District, Fornie Texas Education Agency, docket number one one seven, S E oh one two two, State Office of Administrative Hearing, docket number seven oh one dash two two dash one two one three, as discussed in closed session. May I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board authorize the superintendent to resolve the matter, student, the Fornie Independent School District, Texas Education Agency, docket number one one seven, S E zero one two two, State Office of Administrative Hearing, docket number seven oh one, two two, one two one three, pursuant to terms discussed in closed session, and further authorize the superintendent to execute all documents concerning resolution as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item sixteen, announcements. Please note the dates listed there for upcoming holidays and things as future meetings. Anything else that we need to address?
Mr. Ferris, if you don't mind, just a couple comments on announcements. We do have our regular meeting scheduled right now for May the ninth, since we do have an election that prior Saturday. If we are able to canvass the vows on, on the ninth from the county, if they've got that ready for us, we'll do that that night. If not, I just want to prepare you for a possible special call meeting to follow once the county has that information ready for us. And then also, just wanted to point out to you, Monday, May twenty-third, that's an exciting day, we'll be going back to Globe Life, and Fornie High School's graduation will begin at four o'clock. North Fornie's will begin at eight o'clock that night. So, prepare you for that, and don't worry, Mr. Johnson, we did get Babe's Chicken.
Thank you for those updates. Just back up here on item fifteen, clarify, Becky, did you get the motion and the second on fifteen?
Yes, it was a second.
Regan. So, Johnson made the motion. Regan, you got it? Okay, I'll make sure we have that. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're now caught nine twenty-five, and we are adjourned.